Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Laguna Woods City Council on Wednesday, October 18 at 2:00 here in Laguna Woods City Hall. The first thing on our agenda ought to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call. First thing on our agenda is the roll call. Will you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Horn.
Here.
Councilmember McCary.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hatch. Mayor, Councilmember Moore is absent, and Mayor Connors.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilmember Moore is at a LAFCO meeting out of the city, so she couldn't be with us today. Okay, I'm going to ask Jim Barris from Laguna Beach Police Department to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Everybody, please stand and place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be a number of opportunities for members of the public to address the City Council. At Item 5, we have general public comments, and people are invited to speak then. And at each of the items that we consider on our calendar, we will be open to listening to what the public has to say. If you can't, if you're not able to attend a meeting, you can always send in an email or deliver a written comment, and that will be handed to us so we can take it into consideration. Thank you. We start with our presentations and ceremonial matters, and the first one is a certificate of commendation for the Chinese American Club and their 2013 Mid-Autumn Festival. First, I will ask the City Clerk to read the commendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certificate of commendation, City of Laguna Woods, Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods Village, Villages 2023 Mid-Autumn Festival. Whereas the Mid-Autumn Festival, also known as the Moon Festival or Moon Cake Festival, is a traditional observance celebrated by Chinese throughout the world. And whereas the Mid-Autumn Festival is one of the most important holidays in Chinese culture, with its popularity on par with that of the Chinese New Year. And whereas the Mid-Autumn Festival is held on the 15th day of the eighth month of the Chinese lunar calendar, when the moon is at its brightest and roundest, representing family reunion. And whereas the Mid-Autumn Festival celebrates the fundamental concepts of gathering, giving thanks, and praying with families and friends getting together to enjoy mooncakes, view the moon, give thanks for the abundant harvest, and pray for longevity and good fortune. And whereas the Mid-Autumn Festival dates back to over 3,000 years, and the Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods Village has been celebrating the event in Laguna Woods for 25 years. And whereas the Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods Village works throughout the year to promote peace and harmony and contribute to harmonious cultural awareness, both amongst its large membership and in the Laguna Woods community as a whole. Now therefore, it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim, commend, the Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods Village on the occasion of its 2023 Mid-Autumn Festival, as well as its accomplishments and ongoing contributions to the Laguna Woods community dated this 18th day of October 2023.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Yang, the President of the Chinese Club, to come up to the podium and say a few words.
Okay. My name is Mike Yang, President of Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods Village of It is truly in honor of the Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods Village to have this proclamation take place. We thank the City of Laguna Woods for your recognition. Today, the Chinese American Club of Laguna Woods have total of 778 members. We established in 1998, which is 25 years ago. We have year-round activities and events. One of the most popular ones is the Mid-Autumn Moon Festival of last month. In that event, we had 525 audience watching the show and had lunch and mooncake to celebrate the traditional harvest and family get-together festival. Our VIP, Mr. Tom Jiang, right here, donated 700 mooncakes for this event, and our volunteer and performers work hard for all the shows and the decorations. We thank our Board of Directors, our team members, for this memorable event. We thank the City of Laguna Woods for giving this opportunity to present Chinese American Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the Council? Does any member of the Council want to make any comment?
I would like to say that it was a wonderful moon festival. You play a mean harmonica. This hasn't been my first one, but it was wonderful. The entertainment was fabulous, the costumes, the food. I want to congratulate the Chinese Club. We, Chinese American Club, I don't want to make a mistake here. I think I got to give you a proclamation five years ago, and it's always such an honor. Thank you all for coming. It's really wonderful to see you here and here for another 25 years. Thank you.
Excuse me, I never know when to turn it on, and they tell me I should turn it off more than I turn it on. But that picture in the globe, do we have any of those wonderful men here that, none here?
No.
That was a great, that was a great accomplishment to get them out there on the stage, wasn't it? Is that a traditional dance that they perform? No? Well, anyway, thank you for being a part of this community. We appreciate it. It is a very unique community. Certainly, we're all older folks, but there is a commonality regardless of where we came from, as to us being here together as a community of, a community of the whole, which is what we are. As a legal concept, we are of a whole. Thank you for coming.
I want to say how nice it is to see all of you here and how great it is that you are able to put on your cultural events and invite others in the village to attend and to see them. We tend to live in our own little bubbles, and, you know, we live with our people and you associate with your people. And the good thing about Laguna Woods is that we have the opportunity to cross over and to participate in other cultures. And particularly being on the City Council, that gives us a chance, because we often get special invitations. And that's one of the things I like best about this job, is how it puts us in touch with all the different parts of the community. So would someone like to move the proclamation?
Proclamation?
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Let's take a quick break, and we'll take a photograph and present with the proclamation, okay?
We have clear view. Go ahead. Yeah, I'll take photos. Yes.
I'm going to lie down here. Do this sort of thing. Right in the tail?
Are you going in there, Noel?
I'm going to go right over there.
That's right, the tall people in the back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. We have a tour of the welfare, welfare park, welfare square. We have a humanitarian, family history monitor, and of course, we have a secondary cabinet.
That's right, the tall people in the back.
You could balance us out, Noel.
All right.
No, I'm there.
Thank you.
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 We have a tour of the welfare, welfare park, welfare square. We have a humanitarian, family history monitor, and of course, we have a secondary cabinet.
Awesome, I have heard of them.
Yeah, but Aaron and my brother, this is just there.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is a presentation regarding coyote activity and living with wildlife. And Mr. Barris from the Laguna Beach Police Department will introduce his animal control officers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council, City Staff, and Residents of Laguna Woods. My name is Jim Barris. I'm the Animal Services Manager for Laguna Beach Laguna Woods Animal Services. This afternoon, we have the privilege of presenting a presentation on living with wildlife. We're going to have Animal Services Officer Justin Toguchi conduct the presentation. We also have our other Animal Services Officer that just recently joined our team, Lauren Elliott here as well. After the presentation, if the Council has any questions, we'll be around to answer them. So I'm going to turn it over to Animal Services Officer Justin Toguchi.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me today. So it looks like the PowerPoint is up, so we'll get started. So this is the Living with Wildlife presentation. I do do a much longer one. I usually do it for the Laguna Woods Dog Club. Anyone's interested in that, please feel free to come over to that, and you'll get a lot more in-depth. Again, this is a summarized, extremely summarized version of it. So we can go to the next slide, please. So where would you want to live? The reason I put this slide up is to show two different pictures. One is the shrublands, and one's the city. It's to dispel the myth that some people just believe the coyotes live in the shrublands, but in reality, coyotes live in both. They live in the shrublands, and they live within our city. And obviously, that's a picture of Laguna Woods, as you can see. Next slide, please. So are coyotes a threat? Only one confirmed coyote attack has been, again, meaning attack as a human, a coyote attacking a human, has been recorded in the last 20 years for both the city of Laguna Beach and Laguna Woods, okay? Again, there's roughly about 17,000 people, we have the exact number, there, 17,644 people that live in Laguna Woods, and you're actually more likely to be, get bitten by a dog than you are a coyote. So what to say with that is coyotes attacking, people are very rare, but coyotes attacking predating upon your small dogs and your cats, yes, is a lot more a common occurrence. We go to the next slide, please. So I posted just a map of Laguna Woods. If you could see in the green highlighted areas is going to be most of our wilderness, and I would say green areas, and that's typically where you're going to be seeing a lot more coyote activity. For one example, me and Lauren actually recently was out, were out on Villa Vista, and there was a picture circulating around of five coyotes sitting in like a residential street area. So one of the things we do is we do active coyote hazing essentially, so me and Lauren, between like pretty much 6 to almost 9 o'clock, we're out just driving around, and we're actually able to successfully haze these coyotes away using our paintball guns. And it was very successful, and usually, once we do a service like that, they typically do not come back in that area for a time. So again, I just wanted to emphasize and show the areas that we're typically getting activity, and I would say just from my experience, the Aliso Creek, which is right on the bottom right-hand side, is a very high coyote activity area. We get a lot of activity over there, along with the golf courses. Next slide, please. So what are, I would say, what things can we do with coyotes? Can we relocate them? Well, it's really not a viable situation for us because, one, it's illegal to relocate any wildlife. You would need to get a permit with California Fish and Wildlife to do so. There are outside companies that do provide that services, but typically, the animal ends up dying anyways. So if you relocate wildlife, it's usually going to end up in their demise, which is unfortunate. We can go to the next slide. Is eradication the solution? Meaning, do we just kill all the coyotes in that way? No, that's not the solution either. Studies have shown that when you extremely take a large population of coyotes in the area, the alpha males of the pack and females notice that their numbers are dwindling, and they will actually increase the reproduction rate. Meaning, you might take a bunch now, but in the long term, you're actually going to be creating more problems, because there will be more coyotes that you're going to be dealing with comparatively to the amount you had before. Not only mention this too, is if you take a bunch of coyotes out, then coyotes from other areas start to move in, and these coyotes actually be, could be more aggressive, or they might not know the ways of Laguna Woods, I would say. A lot of the coyote older alpha males and females in Laguna Woods kind of have an understanding, more so, to not mess with people. The more issues we get are with younger coyotes that are not sure, and they're unaware, and they're learning. Go to the next slide. So the solution that we would propose, and that what Fish and Wildlife also proposes, is living with wildlife. And the best way to do that is learning how to adapt and learning how to communicate or haze coyotes. Go to the next slide right there. So it's a very kind of basic steps we'll go over again in my other presentations. I go a lot more in-depth of how we could successfully do this, but essentially, what it comes down to is you need to scare the animal away. So step one, you would stand your ground, obviously. You would yell at them, make loud noises. Usually, my presentation, I do my presentation voice of yelling, but maybe for this situation, I'm not going to do that. And then you wave your arms, make yourself look big and intimidating, right? If that doesn't work, then it's recommended you slowly approach the animal to assert your dominance of your territory. Now, the thing I do mention with Laguna Woods residents is that some people aren't able to do that, or some people aren't willing to do that, and we never ask for someone to do more than their more, we don't want to make someone do something that they're not willing to do. So if they're not willing to do that, then we're not going to ask them to do that. But if everyone's able to do these hazing techniques, and that would greatly influence how the coyotes interact with Laguna Woods residents, and really, in my opinion, that would solve most issues, because if a coyote always in Laguna Woods is encountering people, and they're scaring them away each time, they will determine that this area is not suitable for them to live in, that is a hostile area, and they'll want to move on. So those are the general approaches. We do mention throwing items, so like if all those steps don't work, then yes, you can pick up some sticks and some rocks on the ground, you can throw it at them, not to like maliciously harm them, but you provide that physical stimulus, basically, to let them know, oh, something hit me, and there's something yelling at me, and that in sense is a great way to haze, because again, we're not trying to harm the animal, we're trying to just give that physical stimulus, so they know that, oh, I need to get out of here, something's going on type of thing. Next slide, please. This is just the quote I like to give to everybody, and I'll read it for you guys. If you act like prey, the predator will treat you like prey. And we'll go to the next slide and kind of talk a little bit about that of never. You never want to act like prey. So acting like prey would be if you see a coyote and you run away, then yeah, that coyote is going to chase you. That's what they do. They're the top predators we have here in Laguna Woods as of right now. Make yourself look smaller, don't like crouch down, like, you know, with the bears, they say crouch down. Don't do that for a coyote, you're making yourself look smaller. Never keep it redundant, meaning, and again, this is something I go more in-depth in my full presentation, but when you're making like your sounds, coyotes get used to people yelling at them, because everyone pretty much will do that. So they find like, oh, you're yelling at me, but you're not following through, you're not scaring me off of the area. So you want to change it up. Maybe you could do like an air horn. Some people like to do like the little peanuts can with some pennies in it, and they shake that and rattle that up. That seems to be very effective. Never feed the coyote. I think all of us can agree, yeah, we don't, we don't want to be feeding coyotes out in Laguna Woods. That's going to continue to attract them into our area, all right? You never corner a sick or injured animal, just in general, because they're going to defend themselves for their lives, so we don't want to do that. Call us if you see anything like that. And as before stated, we never want to maliciously harm an animal, okay? Next slide, please. So what does Animal Services do to minimize coyote problems for Laguna Woods? Well, we respond to calls for service. So if someone calls, you know, a call-in referencing a coyote, we at least would document that for a coyote sighting. If the animal is acting weird, sick, or injured, we would respond out to address that animal, to address the issue. We conduct community education events. Obviously, we go out to the, mostly it's been Laguna Woods Dog Club, and we go, and we do provide educational events for them. I can say I've done three of those presentations for them already, and it's been great. We had great turnout, and I think a lot of great solutions came out of those presentations and that conversations. I also conduct or do presentations for just like buildings as well. If there's a certain like building head that wants to have a conversation about coyotes, then I'll come out and we'll talk to everyone at that building. We also perform targeted hazing efforts, just like how me and Lauren a couple days ago did that hazing at Villa Vista for those five coyotes that were taken a picture of a couple weeks ago. We erect coyote alert signs. If we're having issues in a certain area, you'll see our big yellow signs with the coyote howling on it, and that's kind of to tell residents, hey, there's a little bit more coyote activity in this area. And we disseminate information to the community through media outlets and flyers. At times, again, if we're getting a hotspot area, I'll put up flyers, or sometimes we go on to media. I know Dave went on your guys' channel a couple times and did a presentation, and I think we might be looking into doing something like that again sometime soon, so. Next slide, please. This is pretty much going to be concluding the presentation, but if you had any other questions, feel free to, you know, give us a call at the numbers listed above, and if you guys would have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you. Yes?
Thank you. We live in an area that is one of the highways for them.
Yes.
Off of Paseo del Lago, under the golf course, the small golf course, and we see them constantly going back and forth. The other night, about dusk, we heard what we, I don't know whether they make noises, screeching and so forth, but we heard an hysterical dog or so forth that sounded like it was down near Gate 7. And would that be a pet that was out that was sensing something, or do the coyotes act that way when they find a prey at that time of night?
So to answer the question with this way is coyotes are going to be most active at night and early mornings. That's typically when they're going to be hunting and patrolling their territory.
Right.
Whether or not that was them predating on a dog or anything like that, I'm not sure, but coyotes do communicate vocally, very vocally. They yip and they yap, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they've killed something if they're yipping or yapping. Sometimes it just means they're communicating with other packs, or they're communicating within their pack, letting them know, hey, come here, letting other packs know, hey, stay away. Or it could, it could very well be that they've made a kill, and they're telling all the family members to come back around. So to answer the question, I'm not sure exactly what the sounds were, but just know that, yes, it is not uncommon for coyotes to make loud noises like the yipping and yapping to communicate with one another.
Okay. Do you ever reach a point in this community when there are too many?
Too many coyotes?
Yeah.
So to answer that question, like I said before, the best thing we can do and to live with coyotes, and the best solution for coyotes really, is learning to live with the wildlife, okay? Taking the coyotes like to a large numbers doesn't prove to be effective, because as I stated before, if you take a large number of coyotes, studies have shown that that population will actually dramatically increase the next season, because the alpha male and female reproduction rates will rapidly increase, so meaning, maybe you get three or four pups this season, right? Just for normal activity. If you rapidly take their population, then one, new coyotes move in, and two, the alpha males and females reproduction rate will increase, meaning, instead of that three you're getting, you might be getting six coyotes instead. So now, we're creating even more coyotes in the next years, and even, I would say, more issues comparatively if we taught these coyotes how to properly live with us by hazing would actually be a more sufficient long-term solution than it would be to dramatically take. So to answer your question, I wouldn't say that there is a specific number that would be in order for us to have to take, but for some instances, take is necessary, but for just for population control, not at this point, no.
If we, if we are able, if you require us to do this, then it seems to me we all have an avocation, at least in the trails where we see them all the time, of being out there trying to make life noisy for them. And we change our lifestyle in order to protect us from their lifestyle. Is that essentially what you're saying?
I believe from what you're said, yes, we're just trying to...
I mean, if we have to live with them, and we are supposedly living quietly here, enjoying life, and they're coming in, running down all of the green areas and the streets and so forth, then where to just accept that and alter how we proceed outside? That's what you're saying, isn't it?
I think a good point would be to keep the coyote population to an acceptable and reasonable level. You want to control their food sources. That's primarily what's going to draw in wildlife in general. So food sources for a coyote are going to be unfortunately on protected pets.
Yeah.
Fruits or other kind of, you know, detritus that people, you know, leave laying around, as well as other wildlife like, you know, rabbits, you know, and bunnies, you know, rabbits, you know, that kind of thing. So if you, if we keep food sources reduced to a minimum by people cleaning up their properties, not leaving, you know, if you have fruit trees, you know, fruit laying on the ground, if you keep your pets, you know, leashed, you know, inside at night, if you're outdoor and you're watching them, that reduces or minimizes the available food sources for coyotes, and that has a natural effect of keeping the population under control.
All right.
Because that's where wildlife goes. They go where the food is. You keep the food away, that keeps the population down.
Do they have an alternate location where they would disappear to or go to if we stop feeding them?
They're feral, so, you know, they're going to go where they can find food. And frankly, why you will often find more coyotes per square mile in an urban area versus wild?
Because of the food.
It's the food.
Yeah.
I mean, where do you think people live? Okay? So, you know, if we, if, if, you know, people are leaving their trashcans out with the lids off, or they're not cleaning up their properties, and they're leaving, you know, say you have a dog, and you leave your doggy dish out with food in it, you don't clean it up, coyotes can smell all of that, they're coming in and getting that, versus being in the wilderness area where they have to hunt, and they got to compete with cougars and bobcats, you know, and, you know, other wildlife, or that random, you know, squirrel, you know, it's much more difficult. So that's why their numbers are fewer in rural areas compared to urban areas. But the advantage to us is we have control of this area. We can clean up our properties. We can close the lids on our trashcans. You know, if we have fruit trees, we can clean that up, you know, bring the doggy dish in, watch your pets. You know, we have the ability to alter the environment to some extent to minimize food sources, which will then have a positive effect on reducing the coyote population. So they will go into the wilderness areas, you know, and hunt.
Thank you.
You guys have any other questions for me?
Just a comment to follow up on what you just said. If you want to control the coyotes in this community, stop feeding them, stop leading, leaving out cat and dog food, and keep your pets on a leash, a short leash, not these long 20-foot leashes. If you want to let your dog run free, take them to the dog park, or take them somewhere else. Your cat doesn't... or take them somewhere else. Your cat doesn't isn't born being an outdoor cat. If you want to keep it alive, keep it inside. We have a responsibility to, to live with our, all of our neighbors. We want peace with everybody. We can't just eliminate, unfortunately, all the things that we don't like. So, but we have a lot of actions that we can take. They don't attack people. One attack in 20 years. They don't attack people. Keep your pets, take care of your pets, don't feed the coyotes and do what this gentleman says. Make yourself big and make them go away. They're not going to attack you. So we need to take responsibility here too. And I I've heard your other presentations at the dog park and they're wonderful and they're important because I don't want to see wildlife slaughtered for no reason either, just because somebody doesn't want to take care of their their surroundings.
I hope you're I hope you're not suggesting. I was suggesting slaughtering more animals and wildlife.
No, just that you're saying we have to change our way of life. Only if you're leaving your pets out and leaving pet food out and getting these roasted chickens, then yeah, you should alter your way of life.
Fortunately, I don't have any pets, so I don't have to worry about it.
You don't need to alter your way of life.
Excuse me, excuse me, Madam Mayor, I have a question and a comment. So I'm sorry, I just had to do that. So where I live, I used to see them like dusk and dawn. Now, sometimes I see them early morning, you know, late morning, mid morning, early afternoon. So I'm wondering, is there like a mating season where they are more concentrated in one area? And is there a certain time of the year when they mate?
Yeah. So to answer that question, first I'll address that by nature, coyotes actually are supposed to be active during the day, but they adjust their schedules based upon us. So because these coyotes actually live more so in our residential areas, then they're going to be more it is more beneficial for them to be active during the nighttime or in the morning because that's when either you guys are sleeping or there's less people around and that's probably honestly when more prey is available to them. In regards to seasons, so the coyotes typically are going to be mating during the winter time. But you may see an increase in activity like now in the fall is because the alpha males and females or the adults in the family pack are now going out and teaching their pups, the smaller coyotes, to be adults, essentially. So you would see a little bit more activity coming in the fall, especially with these, I would say, larger packs. It's really just the alpha male, female, possibly just one of them, with their pups, teaching them how to be coyotes essentially.
Wow. Okay.
Okay, one one further question, may I? Do you have any sense of how many packs we have or groupings? If they go into smaller groups, family groups or whatever in the village?
To answer that question, it would be very difficult for me to be able to give you an exact number of packs that live there. I do know that there is at least one because me and my coworker Lauren did haze a alpha male, looked like to me an alpha male, and then its pups. So that's indication of one
All right.
family right there. But typically, a coyote's range is going to be up to five to maybe 15 miles. So if we just looked at, you know, Laguna Woods in itself, it really wouldn't be able to be supporting that many large packs within itself. Okay, it's probably maybe, again, I wouldn't be able to give you an exact answer of how many packs are there, but we do get coyotes in Laguna Woods and for sure, there's at least one.
At least one. Okay, thanks.
Anything else for me, guys?
Thank you. We do have a flyer about coyote awareness at City Hall and it's available in English and Spanish and Chinese and Korean. So if anybody wants to come by and pick one up, you can do that. Thank you. And thanks for all your efforts on our behalf. The next item is a presentation regarding our mobility technology plan. And we have somebody here from Arcadis IBI Group. At least I hope we do.
Yes, we do. We have Steve Wilks and Josh Albertson from Arcadis IBI, which is the firm that the Southern California Association of Governments hired to prepare the mobility technology plan for Laguna Woods. Just brief background, this was again, a plan that the city applied for through a competitive grant program in 2021. We were one of seven proposals selected for funding out of a total of 21 applications. Arcadis IBI Group has been working on this for some time. The council had two previous reports on this, one in July of 2022 and another in April of 2023. The plan is now complete. There's a link to it in the agenda packet. We also included the short two-page executive summary for the council's review. But with that, I'm going to ask Steve to introduce his discussion and walk you through the the plan that was developed. This similar presentation will be given to SCAG's Emerging Technologies Committee next week. Councilmember Moore sits on that committee at SCAG as well, so she'll have an opportunity to hear it then herself. But with that, Steve, you want to take it away?
Absolutely. Chris, thank you very much. I'm hoping everybody can hear me and I can't see the PowerPoint.
Let me, yeah, let me get it up for you. Give me one second.
Make sure I'm speaking to the appropriate slide.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. And if you could advance to the next slide, please. So Madam Mayor, members of council, it's with great pleasure that I get to share with you the outcomes from this plan. I want to spend a minute and just talk about the background in terms of the need and the work plan, speak to the evolving mobility landscape, what we heard as a result of consultation with key stakeholders and residents. Excuse me, key findings or key takeaways? And then a way forward in terms of plan outcomes and what we refer to as this concept of operations. Next slide, please. So as you heard, Chris had mentioned, the city of Laguna Woods was awarded project funding from SCAG Sustainable excuse me, Community Program and the Smart Cities and Mobility Innovations Call for Projects back in 2021. And it's really the Technical Assistance Program, Technical Assistance Program that strengthens strengthens partnerships with local agencies and strategic partners who are responsible for land use and transportation decisions. And this really helps the region achieve its unified climate goals. So goals of the plan and the city include supporting lifelong mobility for older adults and persons with disabilities, removing barriers to access and maintaining the dignity and independence of all persons, proposing additional mobility options that addresses both present and future mobility needs and improving resiliency and quality of life by reducing vehicle miles traveled or VMTs and greenhouse gas emissions and as well as traffic projections. Next slide, please. I think one slide may have Okay. So this has really been an opportunity to reexamine mobility services in light of new delivery innovations and advancements in technology and communications, as well as being foundational to address what we refer to as changing customer preferences and expectations. Looking at mobility solutions that provide direct point-to-point travel, schedule information in real time, convenient first mile, last mile options integrated into transit trips and the ability to hail a ride or the spontaneity of travel. We're all, you know, addressed as as we were going forward in developing the concept of operations. Next slide, please. So the project team researched the state of autonomous people movers and connected vehicles and deployment, looked at deployments across the country to analyze best practices and lessons learned related to the technology. And AV deployments, while not yet widespread, have appeared in a number of cities with conditions similar to the city of Laguna Woods. Next slide. One such deployment that I really wanted to spotlight was the deployment of autonomous shuttles connecting older adults in the Detroit area with a local hospital. And this is a very interesting one that has proved very successful in terms of getting area residents transporting senior citizens and underserved to and from appointments and other needs at the hospital. It's about a 1.3-mile route. While the vehicle is driverless in terms of truly, you know, autonomous, they do have an onboard attendant. And this is again, one of the key takeaways from the early deployments of autonomous vehicles, this onboard attendant that serves a multitude of safety purposes, educating passengers on the shuttle's technology and assisting passengers with boarding and egress. And really addresses, you know, one of the key takeaways that we gleaned from from the research was, you know, public perception and apprehension in using autonomous vehicles or transport in a vehicle without a driver. Next slide, please. So the the project team also conducted community engagement with stakeholders, SCAG and residents, where it was determined that, you know, CAV readiness and possible AV pilots should be explored further. And there were some other key takeaways in terms of certainly heard, you know, the resounding need excuse me, for of older adults and individuals with disabilities, including those with visual impairments who may not be familiar with technology and may not have a smart device. It speaks to any technology platform needs to be in in an accessible format as well as alternate formats available, as I mentioned a moment ago, for those that may not have a smart smart device. We also heard about trip patterns specific to residents in the city in terms of typically discretionary travel tends to be shorter trips for local shopping and medical facilities in the immediate vicinity, as well as the need for some medical trips of a longer nature, such as the VA Hospital in Long Beach. Next slide, please. So there were a number of key takeaways based on again, what we heard and what the research was telling us. And they can be categorized as some technical takeaways in terms of the vehicles and the operating environment, the need to tailor the vehicle type appropriate to the operating environment in terms of vehicle speeds that are compatible with the street network. And in the case of Laguna Woods, it would be, you know, El Toro and Molten and ensuring that the technology was compatible with with that existing infrastructure whereby more advanced vehicles operating at higher speeds may require more extensive data collection and mapping effort. And the other technical piece relating to the operating environment was the location of the maintenance facility that can certainly present challenges in terms of implications for the range that the vehicle is able to cover as well as defining the service area. In terms of governance, the whole planning, implementation and funding, important to acknowledge that this implementation deployment can be expensive and resource intensive. The need to reflect local procurement processes where there may be restrictions to complicate any type of contracting processes, the the need to procure the services of third-party vendors may require the development or implementation of AV regulations, the need to define roles and responsibilities of how the system would operate. And then not to underestimate how insurance and liability are indeed complicated issues. Next slide, please. And then the final area of takeaways is that of acceptability and social perceptions, the expectations of community and the need for engagement and buy-in. And I refer back to the example I spoke to a moment ago in that Detroit situation, serving over older adults and access to medical facilities where they had that onboard attendant to address some of these very issues around safety and reliability. And certainly important to set expectations, what the service can and cannot do. And that speaks to just the the proof of concept, how one would address unexpected events, whether it's maintenance collisions, things of that nature, the need to clearly articulate community mobility needs. And last, but certainly not least, is the need to engage the public early and often in going forward in the planning and deployment processes to understand and address concerns. Next slide. So in summary, the the plan offers a roadmap for CAV readiness and AV pilot programs that can be adopted in Laguna Woods and other similar municipalities in the region. In terms of the specifics for the way forward, I'm going to turn it over to Josh, my colleague, and just speak to the recommended three-phased approach for going forward. Josh?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Steve, and thanks, everybody, for having us here today. Excited to talk about this and talk about this three-phased approach in a little bit more detail. So as Steve mentioned, the ideas that we're creating these kind of three different phases such that they kind of build off of one another and at any point, the city could choose to advance to the next stage or stop at a current stage. And that that phase that they've completed would still provide value either to, you know, autonomous vehicles or, you know, to mobility in some other context for the city of Laguna Woods. And so important to stress that the the plan itself doesn't commit the city to any specific action and that Phase One has a couple of different approaches that I'll talk about and benefits. So Phase One is really all about readiness and so we're both using it as an opportunity to prepare for a potential autonomous vehicle shuttle pilot, should the city decide to pursue that in the future. But also look at infrastructure and different modifications that could just help improve mobility in the city more generally. And so it's a matter of things like intersection improvements and, you know, striping upgrades, things that are important for the right-of-way for any vehicle, but become particularly important when deploying autonomous vehicles. You know, those sensors and those cameras need to be able to see lane markations and signage really well, things like that. We also talk a little bit in the plan about this idea about mobility hubs, which are kind of an amalgamation of resources and it's transit-oriented infrastructure in one place that help people connect to services and, you know, especially useful for folks that are car-free or car-light. And then other features like integrated trip planning tools. So there's an opportunity to explore, you know, establishing a mobility on-demand type service or platform that does not have to include autonomous vehicles right now, but could incorporate an on-demand autonomous vehicle pilot service in the future. And so these are some different things that we hope the city would consider to help prepare them for, you know, autonomous vehicles shuttles, but could also be used, you imagine, in a situation where private autonomous vehicles are becoming more prevalent. You know, things like charging stations at mobility hubs or infrastructure marking specific lanes could be used for those personal autonomous vehicles as well. So that's kind of the the focus of that first phase is really preparedness, readiness. So that's kind of the focus of that first phase is really preparedness, readiness, and it allows for an opportunity to check in again, you know, with the public, with other folks that are involved, other stakeholders, to see how that's going before the city were to engage in a Phase Two, if that's even desired. And so on the next slide, talk a little bit about these other two phases. And so a Phase Two, if the city were to take that up, would be a more dedicated actual pilot service of an autonomous vehicle. It would still be fairly limited in scope, so it would operate along El Toro Road and Molton Parkway. Again, it would be kind of an on-demand design where there's not physical stops, but people could request it and then get a pickup and a drop-off anywhere along those two corridors. And it allows for those concepts in Phase One to be actually tested for some of those digital infrastructure elements to be incorporated into the AV service. And the focus of this is really a proof of concept, right? And it's a stage that a lot of people and a lot of autonomous vehicle services are in right now, which is to say that it might not be the highest ridership or the most in-demand service, but developing that technology, having it, you know, proven that it can operate in that space, it allows it to develop, allows those processes to really coalesce and consider whether it would be useful to expand. And that's where Phase Three comes in. It's really taking that concept and expanding it to some other operating conditions and contexts. And so some of the things that came out of those conversations with stakeholders were, you know, it'd be really great to do a first-last-mile connection within residential communities. And so, you know, once we have a proof of concept and, you know, can have additional time to work through, you know, other jurisdictional concerns and considerations with residential communities, that could be one way to expand this. Another could be expanding access to medical facilities. So there's the Saddleback Medical Facility, or maybe even others in the region, where it could be really useful to help get people there in an on-demand fashion and kind of have this service to help support that. And then the last is to just expand and integrate some of those trip planning and booking tools that we talked about to include not just the autonomous vehicle, you know, pilot service, but also a whole range of services that you can compare and help trip plan so that you are looking at, this is not just a way to help you within Laguna Woods, but also how it can connect you to nearby communities and resources outside of the city, too. So those are kind of the first three phases of this that we've been considering. Again, it's each phase, there's, you know, time built in to weigh it and evaluate.
I think we lost your audio, Josh. Steve, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened to Josh. So, yeah, so this plan really defines strategies. Josh, are you back?
Oh, sorry, yeah, where did I cut out? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. You're just wrapping up the summary of Phase Three.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so the takeaway from Phase Three is really those opportunities to expand first-last-mile connections with residential communities, the access to the medical facilities, and then opportunities to connect more regionally and to other cities and stuff. So I'll pause there, sorry if I cut out for a little bit.
Very good. So again, thank you, Josh. And to summarize or in short, the plan really defines strategies with actionable steps to prepare the city for connected and autonomous vehicle future. And really presents, you know, the plan can also be applied to other municipalities within the SCAG region for expansion and additional AV pilot opportunities. And at that, Madam Mayor, members of council, we would certainly entertain any questions you may have.
And maybe before we do that, I'll just jump in and thank both Steve and Josh and the other IBI group employees. The city's been closely engaged with the IBI team for, what has it been, a year, a little over a year, maybe, on this project? And I also want to thank April Baumgarten from our staff, who has been the point person on our side coordinating with IBI. So having said that, I would turn it back over to the mayor, if you have any questions for IBI while they're here today. Like I said, there's a link in your agenda packet to the plan itself and the excerpted executive summary. But that, I think, wraps up our presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate the information. Our community certainly has a fair share of people who are in need of these mobility solutions. And in order to to look ahead to the new technologies that are available to us, it's important that we stay on top of this. So we look forward to discussing this at future council sessions. Anybody else have anything to add?
I have one brief question. Did I understand that one of the aspects of your investigation would indicate the possibility of a program using autonomous vehicles within the confines of the village boundaries as opposed to out in the public domain? Like if I wanted to go to a show in Clubhouse Five, that possibility would be available to me, i.e. having an autonomous vehicle take me there because I couldn't drive. I don't know if that question is clear, but...
Sure, go ahead, Josh.
I'd be happy to speak to that. Thank you, council member. Yeah, I think that that idea really falls under that Phase Three category that we talked about, kind of expanding the jurisdictional boundaries and working with somebody like the villages to make sure that that service is helpful and can be expanded within the communities. So it's not something that's in those first two phases, but one of the key opportunities that we identified for that third phase that could be really beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the input.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I understand that Item 4.4 has been taken off the agenda by the city manager and will be considered a later date.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Item Five, Public Comments. Anybody who wants to address the council on any matter can do so at this time. And we ask you to let us know of your wishes by filling out a form and giving it to our city clerk here. I have received a form from Catherine Weinberg, who was asked to speak. Thank you, Ms. Weinberg.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Weinberg. I am an attorney and I represent the corporate entities Colnick, Inc. and Foodland, Inc., owners of commercial property located at 24365 El Toro Road in Laguna Woods, as well as Robert Louis Porter, Gloria Jean Porter, and Mary Louise Furia, who have been named in a nuisance abatement lawsuit filed on behalf of the city of Laguna Woods. In my practice of law, I spend an awful lot of time evicting commercial tenants. On May 17th of this year, property ownership entered into an agreement to lease a unit to one Kenneth Paxeyasing, an individual. The then prospective tenant indicated that he wanted to lease the space for a retail business selling legal CBD products. The information he provided indicated that the products he intended to sell were primarily creams, face masks, and pet products with ingredients to contain only fully federally legal products. The terms of the lease limited his business use, requiring him to receive all necessary permits from the city of Laguna Woods and specifically prohibiting any type of sale or distribution of any type of legal, illegal, or illicit drugs, including without limitation, distribution and sale of THC-based cannabis or equivalent products. Thus, landlord did not consent to any illegal use and had no intent for its property to be used for an illegal purpose. Having concealed his true intent, the tenant took possession of the unit on June 1st. Without the knowledge or consent of the landlord, tenant soon began the operation of an illegal marijuana dispensary. Landlord had no knowledge of tenant's illegal use until receiving communication from the city, including a letter dated June 20th, 2023. My office was engaged the very next morning, on June 21st, to deal with the situation and take the appropriate action to evict the tenant as a result of its illegal activity. I immediately took action and my office prepared a notice to terminate tenancy for illegal use and had that notice served that very day. I further contacted the city attorney to introduce myself and confirm that we were authorized to cooperate with city efforts and get the use stopped and the tenant out as quickly as possible. As soon as that notice expired on June 27th, we sent a complaint for unlawful detainer to the court to be filed. After obtaining the filed documents with summons, it then went to our process servers, who served it by substituted service on July 6th. That means by law, in an unlawful detainer matter, they then had a 15-day period of time in which to file a responsive pleading with the court. Also, on July 6th, we coordinated with the city attorney to provide access to a locked utility room servicing the property so that the city, along with SCE, could cut the power to the property as the city's building official had red-tagged it. Incredibly, no sooner had the electricity been turned off than the tenant brought in generators and cages to house the generators, which he had bolted to the sidewalk outside of the premises. As our coordination with the city attorneys continued, we continued with the legal process, seeking a judgment for possession so that we could obtain a writ necessary to legally evict a tenant. We discovered that at the last minute, the tenant had retained an attorney to file what's called a demur to the complaint, apparently in an effort to delay the proceedings, and had scheduled the demur to be heard a month later on August 25th. Not willing to wait for that, we immediately prepared and filed an ex parte motion on July 28th, requesting the court advance the hearing date of the demur. In response, the court granted our request to advance the date, but did not agree to hear the demur until August 11th. We filed our opposition to the demur and during the hearing on August 11th, the court ruled in our favor, but allowed the tenant an additional 10 days in which time they had to file an answer. When they failed to file an answer within the 10-day period, we again filed a request for entry of default. The default was entered on August 24th. We obtained a writ of possession from the court as quickly as possible and provided it, along with instructions to the sheriff, to post for the lockout and asking the sheriff to please expedite the lockout, explaining that the property was being used by the tenant for an illegal use. The sheriff's department posted the premises with the eviction notice on August 29th. Commencing on September 5th, the soonest date the sheriff's department could have done the lockout, my office began contacting the sheriff's department on a daily basis, trying to get a sooner date for the eviction. But we were told that the sheriff's department would let us know when they were ready to do that. Finally, we got the call and the lockout took place on September 19th. I understand it may seem like the time period between the time of discovery of the illegal use on June 20th and the eviction on September 19th was a long time. But consider between the delays in court scheduling, waiting periods mandated by law, and awaiting the sheriff's scheduling the actual lockout, that three months was actually very, very fast for us to get it accomplished. While the continued operation of the illegal dispensary was, while the eviction was in process, was frustrating, the landowners shared in the frustration and we took every opportunity to evict the tenant as quickly as possible. No rent or any other money was paid to landlord on behalf of tenant during the time this was proceeding. And the landlord incurred great expense in the form of legal fees and costs exceeding $20,000 as well as costs for repairs to the property for the damage caused by this tenant. It's unlikely that these or any amounts will be recovered from the now former tenant. We respectfully request that the city dismiss the lawsuit as to the landowner and its agents and also request that the citations issued to the landlord for tenant's violations that landlord neither consented to nor allowed be waived. And if you have any questions about any part of the process, I'm happy to answer what I can.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. As you know, the council considers all litigation matters in closed session.
Understood.
And this will be scheduled for our closed session discussion. But actually, I would request that if you feel comfortable with it, that you give a copy of your presentation today either to our city clerk or to our city attorney. So have that available to us.
I can also email it. I can do both. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Weinberg was very thorough in her presentation. I also have here that Drew Imelsky. Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Israelski.
Israelski, okay. Would like to speak to us as well.
Yeah, so my name is Drew Israelski. I'm the asset manager for the building. I dealt with the tenant in getting them into the space. And basically just want to explain how during the month or so of negotiations leading up to getting them into the space, we had a tenant who was occupying the space and possession of it, whose lease was expiring, you know, a month or two from that date. And we actually got them out of the space to put this tenant in under the understanding that it was just a CBD, you know, use. Had we known if it was anything else, we wouldn't have gotten rid of a, you know, perfectly good tenant. During the, you know, discussion with the CBD dispensary that ended up being several representations of, you know, what their business operation was, all explained that it was CBD, strictly CBD. I asked for other locations that the tenant had. Gave me a location in Costa Mesa, had me look up the Google reviews on it, everything, pictures of strictly CBD products, all the reviews, all the comments on it, strictly CBD. Sent me, again, pictures of the store and as Ms. Weinberg mentioned, just creams, ointments, pet products, nothing THC-related. So just in summary, it's wasn't to our knowledge that they were going to be doing anything other than CBD. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have David Porter. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is David Porter. I'm the son of Robert Porter and Gloria Porter, who were mentioned in the citations. And I'm the nephew of Mary Furia, who is my aunt. My father, Robert Porter, is 92. My mother, Gloria Porter, is 90. My aunt is 86. None of them could be here today. None of them had anything to do with this. Colnick, Inc. is a family corporation that was set up by my immigrant grandfather, who, my mother was actually born in Harbin, China, to Russian refugees who had fled the Poland-Russia area near Belarus to go to China to work on the Siberian, Trans-Siberian Railway it was. My mother was born in Harbin, China. They came to this country with nothing. My grandfather bought a small, little store, liquor store, in the Compton area and built that into a small grocery store in Long Beach and took the profits from that and built a small grocery store in San Pedro. He created a legacy for his family that only an immigrant dream could dream about. My parents live off of the rent from this. It's a strip mall. It's a little strip mall. They live off the rent from this. They had nothing to do with this. They had a property manager who vetted the tenant. Everything looked legal, everything looked fine. The tenant came in and I hope you go after him with all the might and power of the city because my parents have been receiving, there's over 40 certified letters. This is after, and I'm not pointing to the city attorney's office. They're doing their job, all right? But people have to understand, there's people behind this. My father has been hospitalized because of the stress of this. He's 92. My mother is worried sick. I've had to abandon my work and what I do to take care of them. So each one of these notices, there's over 40, each one of these notices, just the postage on it is $8. on it is $8.56. So the city spent $400 frightening the heck out of my parents. I'm not here to get angry. I understand process. I understand procedure. I understand that things have to go according to however you set them up. But please understand, when considering whether to find my parents and my aunt, whether this is fair, whether this is equitable, there's people behind this. And I appreciate you letting me explain a little bit about my family history here and who's behind it, so that when you look at, when you're considering the fines, when you're considering this matter, like I said, vis-à-vis the tenant taking for everything he's got. But when you look at Colnick Inc., that was Zachary Colnick, my grandfather. Gloria Porter, my mother. Robert Porter, my father. Mary Furia, 86, my aunt. They didn't do anything. So please, just to the extent you can, don't find them. They're already suffering enough from this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for bringing the information to our attention, and we hope your grandfather gets better.
I'm sorry. It's my father.
Hope your father gets better.
I'm 68, so I can't. I think my grandfather's already.
He's as well as.
But thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And we will consider all this in a future closed session.
Thank you very much.
Thomas Fleming has asked to speak. Are you here, Mr. Fleming?
How are you? I just got a job here at the Stater Brothers, and I thank you all, you know, for having that Stater Brothers there so I can get the job. I met a lot of beautiful people there, you know, and I see a lot of beautiful people every day working there, and that wouldn't be here without, you know, the leadership of this town, you know? And I just want to tell a quick story from here in this beautiful city. Just the other day, I was walking to work, I believe. I was running, I forget. But I was walking to work, working out something, and there was a spider. She was just in her beautiful web, and I'm usually scared to get my fingers close to those beautiful spiders because I know what they can do, but just this one time, I said, "I'm gonna do it." So I went up so lightly, and I just touched, and she jumped up in my palm, kissed my palm, strung down onto the ground, and said, "See ya later. Don't mess with me while I'm in my web." That was here, in Laguna Woods, and I've never experienced that. I've never experienced, some of the beautiful people who live here, walking by, doing the most amazing magic, I focus on everything they're doing in their magic tricks, and I'm like, "I'm gonna see it. I'm gonna see where they're, you know, doing it," and I can't see it. People from Laguna Woods. It's really hot. There could be more trees. There could be more trees planted. The tree of paradise, the tree of heaven grows 15 feet in one year. How do I know? Because I lived in the desert. And instead of taking a shower every day, three times a day, I had to tattoo when it worked, right? But when I didn't work, I would, and the tree grew 15, 15 feet in one year. I was a poor guy, right, with seven dogs living in the desert, and I made a tree do that. Imagine what a city can do with such power as yours. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Good to hear about it. Is there anybody else who wants to address the council during this time of public comment? Okay, public comments are closed. We come now to the consent calendar, where all items will be attended by a single vote unless a member of the council or the staff or the public requests separate consideration of any of these items. Does anybody want to remove anything off of the consent calendar? Okay, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. The next is item 7, public hearings. We have a conditional use permit regarding parking for the AgeWell buses, and we'll take a report from the city manager.
Thank you very much, and I want to acknowledge as I start that Steve Moyer with AgeWell Senior Services is in the audience today and is able to answer questions as well. For those of you who don't know Steve, Steve is the CEO of AgeWell. So this conditional use permit, AgeWell was the applicant, the project location 23810 Via Campo Verde, that is what residents may be more familiar with as an employee parking lot at the Laguna Woods Village Maintenance Center. It's immediately south of the broadband building and kind of the western edge of the Laguna Woods Village Garden Center 2 property. So if you're turning off of Molton Parkway onto Via Campo Verde, it's on the left-hand side, past saddleback golf cars and past the, what's sometimes referred to as the 26-acre undeveloped site. This conditional use permit would do three things. It would allow the lease or rental of 26 off-street parking spaces for motor vehicles within that parking lot. It would modify existing land use approvals for that property to reflect the existing configuration and number of off-street parking spaces provided, and it would allow for the addition of a restroom and handwashing station that had not been previously permitted in that location. So in all of our zoning districts, conditional use permits are required when a property owner or another applicant of some kind is interested in leasing or renting off-street parking facilities. That has to do with the fact that when a building is built, it is typically conditioned to have a certain number of parking spaces. And so when a property owner or some other party wants to take a portion of those parking spaces and use them for some other purpose, the city has an interest in making sure that that condition wouldn't create some sort of nuisance or impact on another property. So on one hand, we want to make sure that the subject property has sufficient parking on-site and that, yes. Is it cutting out? Can we increase the mic volume just a little bit? So in addition to making sure that there's enough parking available on-site, we're also interested in making sure that that parking exists not just for the on-site tenants, but to eliminate the possibility of insufficient parking resulting in those employees or those vehicles that would otherwise park there having to park on another property, thereby creating kind of a spillover effect on neighbors in the area. So the proposed conditional use permit would allow 26 of 258 parking spaces to be leased or rented. It would only allow that lease or rental for certain purposes, so it would be limited to motor vehicles. It couldn't lease or rent that space for, say, outdoor storage. It would be for parking of vehicles. And those vehicles would need to be used to provide non-commercial transportation to medical appointments and for health, human, and social services purposes. These conditions were intentionally included to make sure that the proposed conditional use permit was consistent with the purpose and intent of that zoning district, the residential community maintenance zoning district, which talks about it being used to provide non-commercial services to essentially residents of Laguna Woods Village. The conditional use permit would allow for the addition of a portable restroom and handwashing station that would be able to be used exclusively by either the property owner, so in this case, the Golden Rain Foundation, and employees working on behalf of the Golden Rain Foundation, or the leasing or renters on these 26 spaces. As I understand it, the portable restroom is there so that when AgeWell's buses park, their staff have a place to use the restroom without needing to go to, say, you know, a public restroom in a restaurant or a grocery store, that sort of thing. And then it would retroactively approve restriping that occurred at some point in the past in this parking lot. AgeWell has been using this parking lot under temporary use permits for some time to park buses. They're not currently using it now because they're in between permits, hoping to get this conditional use permit today. But at some point in the past, there was restriping that increased the total number of parking spaces to 258. Our staff have gone through the site and verified that those parking lot, those additional striped parking spaces conform with the city's parking lot standards, and so as part of this, we're including that to legitimize the seven spaces that we identified as having been striped without our knowledge in the past. Want to be clear that this does not include any expansion of a parking lot surface. So there's an existing parking lot there. This does not expand it. It does not reconstruct any portion of it. It simply allows 26 of those parking spaces to be used by AgeWell Senior Services or some successor in the future. And then it allows an existing paved portion of that parking lot to be occupied by a handwashing station and portable restroom. I want to point out that that portable restroom is in fact portable, so we're thinking in terms of like the blue and white temporary restrooms. Nothing in this conditional use permit would allow for the construction of a permanent facility. If either AgeWell or the Golden Rain Foundation were interested in doing that at some point in the future, they would need to come back to the city for additional approvals. This is strictly limited to a single toilet and handwashing station. The document on the left was included in your agenda packet. It's a site plan for the property, but it basically shows that in the existing parking lot, the area that would be leased to AgeWell is in the lower right of the screen. So if you can make out these spaces that have some text written over them, there's spaces in the last lane of parking and then up against the landscaped area at the far east of the parking lot, parallel to the entry driveway. Again, these spaces have been used by AgeWell for some time, so actually, when we went to Google Earth to pull an aerial picture, that aerial picture, which is on the right, shows AgeWell's buses parked there with the parking lot otherwise empty, which gives you probably the best view of what it looks like, but those white boxes in that top-right image, again, towards the bottom right of that parking lot, that's the proposed lease So this conditional use permit, like other conditional use permits that the city council has reviewed in the past and acted on in the past, includes conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval are intended to regulate the use in a manner consistent with the Laguna Woods Municipal Code. They include things for this permit, such as making sure that the portable restroom is serviced on an at-least weekly basis, making sure that the spaces that are leased to AgeWell are clearly identified so that their staff know where the bus goes at the end of the day, knows where their cargo is during the day. But again, that document is included in your agenda packet, and like other conditional use permits, these run with the land. So if adopted, the proposed action would apply to the applicant, which in this case is AgeWell Senior Services, but it would also apply to eligible successors in the future. Again, there's a condition of approval that limits it to non-commercial uses in that kind of health, human services space. So this would not, for instance, allow the Golden Rain Foundation to discontinue a lease with AgeWell and lease it to a for-profit enterprise, you know, maybe UPS, DHL, Amazon type of use. That wouldn't be a non-commercial health and human services type use. So in that way, this approval is intentionally narrow. So after I wrap up my remarks here, there's an opportunity for a public hearing and public testimony on this matter. Once you close that public hearing, we have a recommendation that you adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Approving Conditional Use Permit CUP-2023-0003 to Allow for the Lease or Rental of Off-Street Parking Spaces for Motor Vehicles, As Well as Modifications to the Existing Configuration and Number of Off-Street Parking Spaces and Addition of a New Restroom and Handwashing Station Within Existing Parking Lot at 23810 Via Campo Verde, Laguna Woods, California 92637, and Determining and Certifying That the Conditional Use Permit is Categorically Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Sections 15301 and 15303 of Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations." And in addition to that, in that resolution, we would like you to delete the word pertinent from the third recital, so on the first page of the resolution, the third whereas, we would recommend deleting just the word pertinent. And with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor. I know Mr. Moyer does want to speak during the public hearing. He's indicated that he'd like to go last in case there's any other public comments he needs to respond to.
Okay.
But with that, I'll turn it back over.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this issue about AgeWell buses parking in the employee parking lot? Go ahead, sir. Come up to the podium, please.
Thank you very much. So my question to that one is the toilet that you're talking about, the portable toilet. So you're gonna spend money on the portable toilet there?
We're not spending the money.
How are you putting it there?
It's already there. It's being maintained by the property owner, and it will continue to be maintained either by the property owner or by the company that's leasing for the parking spaces.
Okay. And what if the United States goes to war?
I imagine they'll still maintain it.
You think so?
Yeah.
All right.
We're in kind of a quiet little corner of the United States, so probably.
Yeah, I was in the Navy, you know.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you. I know how the military works, you know, and they kind of take orders, ask questions later. Just letting you know. But the toilet, what I was trying to say was, you're gonna have a person there, you know, homeless are gonna get in the toilet, right?
Well, it's been there for quite some time, so.
The portable toilet?
Yes.
And homeless haven't been in it?
I can't speak to that, but I'm pretty sure it's well-monitored and it's been, it's being kept clean.
By the owner?
Yes.
That's good. I hope you have snipers, you know what I mean?
No snipers. Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak now?
Good afternoon, Mayor Connors, Mayor Protem Hatch, and city council members. I'm Steve Moyer, CEO of AgeWell Senior Services, the nonprofit applicant in item 7.1 on today's agenda. First of all, I'd like to, Christopher, you blew me away as far as your presentation. Throughout my life in business and whatever, I learned to, people that have 100-pound brain, I call it 100-pound brain.
Yep.
And for you to recite all of that.
That's him.
And I was one that reviewed the package submittal, so I knew all that, and for you to do that, obviously, a lot of studying, so I have a lot of respect for that. On behalf of AgeWell, I want to sincerely thank you for all the support the City of Laguna Woods has given us over the years. We very much enjoy serving the residents of your city, which represent about 22% of the number of medical-related trips AgeWell provides in its 426-square-mile service area. We provide appointment trips for dialysis, chemotherapy, physical therapy, doctor appointments, dental appointments, and for prescription pickups. And finally, thank you for your consideration on this agenda item today. A conditional use permit, which if approved by Laguna Woods City Council today, will allow AgeWell to park vehicles in Laguna Woods Village Maintenance Center under certain conditions. Over the past 18 months, temporary use permits, AgeWell has used the lot in substantially similar way as proposed in this agenda item 7.1. To be able to park our buses and vans in the heart of AgeWell's service area allows our organization to continue to serve our older adult population in a highly efficient manner. So I certainly want to thank you for that, and I would like to address, I guess he left, but I wanted to address that it is locked, and the reason that it came about in one of our transportation drivers' meetings, it came up where the driver said, "Steve, is there any way that we could get a portable restroom as we're driving around all day? We're parking." We're parking the buses and that sort of thing." And it took me a year to get that in there, to, to have our landlord approve it and go to their board. And it is cleaned once a week. And, and plus, this agreement indicates that in the event it's not kept up at any given time, you have the ability to ask us to, to take it away.
I hope you'll continue to maintain it even if we go to war.
Absolutely. Certainly will. Certainly will. So anyway, thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. Any questions?
Yes, I did have a question.
Yes.
And it's just because of my background. Is, I'm, I'm just wondering how you could present it to the Golden Rain Foundation to allow a company that do the amazing service that you do to use different facilities like for hand washing and toileting? I, I know about the porta potties and I know that they serve a purpose, but I also know the value of good hand washing and good toileting. So would at some point down the road be an option to go back to Golden Rain Foundation and say, you know, let us use it, let us be humane to us like we are to the, the residents? Let, let our employees use a toilet that they can flush? I, I'm just, that's my part on my sleeve.
I very much appreciate your comment. And the relationship that we have with the Golden Rain Foundation is, is truly fantastic. And, and I will go back and, and ask that question because I would love that for our drivers, but to have 26 drivers going through one of their buildings and the other thing, Councilmember McCary, is that proximity to where we're going? Because i- if we have to drive aways to that, it, it really, you know, it's more gas-wearing tearing the vehicles and parking in, in whatever area. But it points well taken. There's no question that, and, and that may lead possibly down the road to a permanent facility, which, which at least you're open to taking a look at. And that could potentially be in the future. So, great comment.
There is a hand washing station associated with this porta potty?
Yeah.
Okay. But they are what they are.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
And thank you for Will very much.
Chris, did you want to move item 8.1 at this point?
So actually, you, you can close the public hearing for this item unless there's anybody else who wishes to speak.
Anybody else wishes to speak? Public hearing is closed. Are there any other council comments? Okay. Would anybody like to move?
I, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is passed unanimously. Okay. Now, do you want to address item 8.1 out of order?
Yes. If you wouldn't mind if we could move item 8.1 to next on the agenda, that's the unfunded retirement liability item. And then once we take care of that, we will come back to item 7.2 if that is agreed.
Any objections to that? Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
I have to move ahead my presentation as well. So unfunded retirement liability. As the city council is aware, the city participates in the CalPERS retirement system, that's the California Public Employees Retirement System, to provide retirement pension benefits for our employees. In doing that, we make annual contributions to CalPERS that hinge on a variety of factors, but most notably for the purpose of this discussion, on their rates of returns on their pooled investments. So today, we're going to be talking about unfunded accrued liability, which is essentially the difference between the amount of money that we have in our retirement plan and the total projected cost of the benefits that have been awarded to employees. And so oftentimes, cities have a big delta between these two numbers, right? It's not unusual for a city to have a relatively low funding level despite the value of that plan far eclipsing that dollar figure. The UAL, or the Unfunded Accrued Liability for the city, this is something that the city council has been very aggressive in for a number of years in reducing our liability. A couple of ways I wanted to point out, there's an existing budget policy for the city that calls on the city to strive to maintain an at least 80% funded level for our pension plans. I say pension plans plural because there is a distinction, which we'll talk about in a moment, between older employees who have been in the system longer, that are in a different tier of pension benefits than newer employees who are hired in under some pension reform measures. So starting in 2017, the city council took an action for four years in a row to pay off the entirety of our then-current unfunded accrued liability. Then-current is an important concept because the way that PERS operates, we receive valuation reports every summer. They typically come out in July or August, but they lag a year behind. So the current valuation report came out in July 2023, but it is current as of June 30th, 2022. And that's just a function of, it's a large plan, they have to, you know, finalize and account for returns on their investments, and so it takes some time to produce those valuation reports. But in any case, over the, that four-year period, 2017 to 2020, the city paid just over $750,000 into PERS to fully fund those plans based on the best information we had at the time. Since October of 2020, we have not needed to pay any additional lump sum payments. We've continued to pay the annual obligations to the extent that they've existed, but we've not had to make any additional lump sum payments because of two things. One, the city put a lot of money into the system, and then PERS investments performed well, which left us in what is referred to as a super-funded state for a number of years, which yes, the mayor's reaction sounds very exciting. But the super-funded state essentially meant that we had more money in the system than we owed to employees. That essentially created a cushion for us, and that cushion has served us well because for those years, even though CalPERS returns went up and down, we were still able to stay fully funded or super-funded. Now, fast forward to now, and again, by now, I mean June of last year, both of our plans remain very well-funded, but PERS had a little bit of an off year. Some of their returns came in lower than they had anticipated, and as a result of that, our plans are now just over 90% funded. So I mentioned there are two plans. We maintain a classic plan. That's kind of a legacy plan. In 2013, the Public Employees Retirement Act was signed into law, which caused new employees entering the PERS system to enter at a more conservative level of benefits, which over the long term should reduce liabilities for municipalities. But if you look at the screen, the classic plan, which is the older of the two plans, as of June 30th, 2022, that was 93% funded. Now, because of CalPERS earnings over that period of time, that was down from 109.2% the year prior. But I want to draw your attention to, had we not had that 9.2% cushion in the super funding, we would be far below the 93%. In the PEPRA plan, or that pension reform plan, we are approximately 91.3% funded, but again, that was down from about almost 110% super-funded the year prior. I put some demographic information on the slide just to give you a sense of how those plans look at the moment. In 2013, when the PEPRA Act was signed into law, really everybody at the time was in the classic plan, right? All of your existing employees were hired prior to that date. But since 2013, as employees have come and gone, we've seen really a leveling out of those two plans. So there are a total of 14 individuals in the classic plan and 10 in the PEPRA plan. But if you look at that first line, the active members were split about 50/50. And that makes sense because through attrition, through retirements and so forth, you're going to see more people joining at the PEPRA level, which over time will be like a, a third rung in this ladder of reducing the city's pension obligations because it is less expensive for the city to provide retirement benefits to a PEPRA employee than it is to a classic employee. And other than that, you know, there's a mix of transferred, separated, and retired members. Notably, we have no retirees out of the PEPRA plan, which also makes sense because this is typically people starting government service after 2013. Doesn't mean they didn't work before, but starting government service after 2013. So the recommendation today, based on our current valuation reports, is for the city council to authorize payments totaling $306,925 from the general fund. This would be used to make two lump sum payments. There's a lump sum payment for the classic plan and a lump sum payment for the PEPRA plan. That would cause both plans to be fully funded as of that June 30th, 2020, to valuation report. I listed three benefits here, you know. One is this fully funded concept, which is, I think, important. It certainly is a value add for employees who have a desire to see their pension plans backed up by actual financial resources. But I always use the analogy of a credit card, that this is a real liability. Pension liability is not theoretical. At some point, employees retire and call upon the benefits that they were promised, and the city has an obligation to then fund those liabilities. So much like a credit card, though cities have the ability to make a minimum annual payment, the minimum annual payment is just that. There's a payment remaining out there, and when you don't pay the principal on that, it grows and grows and grows. So I think it is a, a real positive thing for this city, that the city council has been committed to paying off the entirety of these liabilities for many years in a row now because it really does save us money in the long term. It saves us money in the long term by not allowing that principal to accrue additional interest and, and grow in, in value, but it also will help in the short term. So the way that PERS calculates those annual required contributions, starting in July of 2024, if you authorize this payment today, are annual obligations that get paid out of our operating budget, which as we all know is the tightest of our budgets. Those contributions will be reduced. So it has an immediate benefit as early as July of 2024, but certainly a very long-term benefit as well. And then the other thing I would just note is that in the future, just like you saw happened here, if PERS experiences another year where their earnings fall below their expectations, having some cushion in there, assuming that these contributions grow over time, also gives us the ability to mitigate the brunt of some of that effect, right? It's better to have a 93% funded plan than it is for us to have an 80-something percent funded plan, and that's only because we've been prudent and paid what we actually owed as near to when we actually owed it as possible. So our recommendation today is to adopt a resolution titled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California: Amending and Adopting the Fiscal Year's 2023-25 Budget and Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-24, Commencing July 1st, 2023 and Ending June 30th, 2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-25, Commencing July 1st, 2024 and Ending June 30th, 2025," related to lump sum payments to pay off California Public Employees Retirement System, CalPERS Unfunded Accrued Liability, and making related operations. Our plan, if you approve this today, would be to make the payment tomorrow. There's, PERS gives us as of a moment in time what we owe. If we miss that window, it increases ever so slightly, but our plan would be to, to make this payment tomorrow. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. Oh, your microphone. Sorry.
This is one of the fiscally prudent things that we do consistently, and it makes me very pleased that we are continuing to keep all of our pension liability funded because organizations can get into big trouble with unfunded liabilities. Okay. Any comments from the council?
I'll move the resolution.
Thank you. And a second from Noel. All in favor?
No.
Oh, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did.
I'm sorry. You sounded like a second. Okay.
I'd be happy to second it, but if I may. We're still, our investments are still being handled by PERS, aren't they? Are, are we looking into other, like Stifel and others to handle the investments? And if we are, does that give us a better return, which mitigates the amount of the unfunded portion of our liability?
Yeah. So I think what you're referring to is actually something we're going to be talking about, we think, in December, but we do have an opportunity to invest in a separate trust, like a Section 115 trust. That, so I am generally supportive of the idea of investing in a secondary trust to generate returns at higher levels than we would otherwise be getting in CDs, but I don't think, at least at this point, it's an alternative to paying off the pension liability because while we're investing in other assets, the PERS principal is increasing in cost, and that, generally speaking, is going to outpace what we are getting in the short term in investments.
So part of our, part of our liability, quote, is paying the cost of operation of PERS itself then, isn't it? Their employee costs are rising, and therefore ours are, we're paying for that as opposed to our people.
Yeah. I mean, part of, when you pay into any pension system, that you're paying overhead and administration for them as much as you are paying for the actual cost of your employees to retire.
I appreciate that the, being 108% covered is a good thing as long as we all stay in business. But if PERS or somebody else goes into that problem area, which they were before, we lose that money, don't we? Would it not be more advisable, and again, I don't know the dollars here, to be, and I'm using the Fire Authority as, to be not 110%, but to be 95% covered or giving a little room there, or is, are we nickel-and-diming it at that point?
Yeah. So I don't think, so I, I respect the fact that, yes, some agencies intentionally maintain a funded level less than 100%, not wanting to be super-funded with the theory that that money that would be super-funded could be invested otherwise.
Could be invested, yeah.
Totally get it. I think with respect to our particular retirement plans, they're not valuable enough to think it makes a ton of difference, but to, not to fast forward completely to December, but one of the things that we will be recommending doing later this year is making a contribution to a trust that would be used to pre-fund retirement liabilities with the idea being that in the future, instead of making these contributions out of the general fund, you would have monies that have been invested specifically for this purpose a little more aggressively than we might be able to do otherwise through CDs and stuff. And we'd be able to pull that money to make these payments, which is, I think, very similar, if not exactly the same, as what the Fire Authority does.
Okay.
So, long story short, I think we agree, but we're not quite there yet.
And I continue to trust you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. That would, I seconded that, I guess, didn't I?
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Now, we are going to go backwards, which we barely do, to item 7.2 relating to zoning code amendments, or changes to our zoning code to conform with state law.
Zoning code amendments. So we were in this position a couple of months ago, I believe three months ago, we had a conversation, and the city council ultimately adopted an ordinance that codified a variety of amendments to our zoning code largely related to compliance with state housing law. We told you at that point that we're going to be coming back several times to continue to implement the housing element, and many of those times, it's going to relate to making changes to our municipal code and our zoning code. changes to our municipal code and our zoning code. So we are back before you today to do what we believe will finish out implementation of two of the programs in the housing element, Programs 1.2.6 and 1.3.4, which both explicitly call for certain changes to be made to our municipal code. These were changes that State Department of Housing and Community Development staff identified during the general plan housing element update process as being necessary in order for us to comply with state law. I'll caveat this by saying that in some circumstances, staff has a slightly different opinion, but at the end of the day, we are comfortable making the changes that we're making without, you know, specific commentary as to the actual necessity or benefit of some of these. In addition to that, one of the things that we wanted to do today was memorialize existing interpretations of whether residential uses are permitted, and if so, under what circumstances, in the open space passive and open space recreation zoning districts. There's a table in your agenda report that takes each proposed amendment and identifies a specific rationale for it, most of which you'll see relate to those two housing element programs. So I want to talk about those two programs and kind of the bigger rocks, if you will, that are included in there. So one of the things that the state had an interest in us doing was explicitly identifying that our zoning is consistent with California's Employee Housing Act. I will just state for the record here that the city is required to comply with the Employee Housing Act, as we are with any measure of state and federal laws, regardless of whether they're codified in the municipal code, but in this instance, the state has a desire to see it explicitly codified. So there are a variety of changes that you'll see that relate to employee housing and agricultural employee housing. The state is aware that we do not have agricultural employee housing. There's no push for us to construct it, but there is existing statute in the Employee Housing Act that requires us to treat applications for agricultural housing, certain types of agricultural housing, in the same manner as we treat other agricultural uses in that same zoning district. And then for employee housing, we're required to, in certain circumstances, treat it the same as we treat single-family homes in certain, and other dwelling structures in that same zoning district. So several of the changes relate to that. I would say that in the greater scheme of things, it adds specificity to the zoning code, but it doesn't, in effect, change anything, because we would have been able to, or we would have been required to comply with these laws, regardless of whether it says so in our municipal code. The second thing that is included there, in terms of the bigger, more significant changes, is revising our definition of family in the zoning code to address inconsistencies with state law related to occupants of community care facilities. These are like group home type situations. So our existing code includes some language that references state licensing requirements or permit requirements for community care facilities that serve six or fewer people. The state pointed out to us that during the housing element process, that the state doesn't actually issue permits or licenses for group homes of six and less, and so we're cleaning up some of that definition to comply with state law. Our recommendation today, after you conduct the public hearing for this item and close the public hearing, would be that you approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance, read by title with further reading waived, titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending Sections 13.08.010, 13.10.020, 13.12.020, 13.13.020, and 13.26.010 of Title 13, Zoning of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code, and determining and certifying that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. In doing so, we would recommend that you do so without the proposed addition of community care facility to the definition of family in Laguna Woods Municipal Code Section 13.26.010, Subsection D, Subsection 395. There's some additional language there that we don't think is necessary, and so we would recommend striking that and incorporating that as part of the recommendation today. So with that, turn it back over to the mayor for the public hearing. Microphone, I think.
Yeah? Does anybody from the council want to address this? Okay, I'll take a recommend, I'll take a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
I move the resolution as amended.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. We'll come now to objective design standards. Item 7.3 on our agenda has to do with new construction and remodeling in our city.
Okay, so as the City Council will remember, in the current two-year budget and work plan, we have a significant work plan item to adopt objective design standards for certain types of new and redevelopment projects. When we refer to design standards, we're talking about things like requirements related to the physical construction of a property, the architectural design of a property, landscape design of a property, that sort of thing. One of the reasons this is very important, not the only reason, certainly there are many, is that state law prevents cities, in many cases, from applying non-objective design standards to certain types of housing development projects. This is meant to remove what the state perceives to be a barrier to housing construction, that cities, you know, apply design standards that require quite a bit of time and effort for applicants to understand, and so they're not saying that you can't regulate the design of housing developments, but that if you do so, you do so in an objective manner. When they talk about objective design standards, in general, state law defines that as standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment, and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowledgeable by both, or knowable by both the development applicant or proponent and the city before submittal. So let me give you an example, just generally speaking, there are cities that say things like, "In this area of the city, we are seeking a Mediterranean design style." That would be a non-objective design standard. When we say Mediterranean design, every single one of us in this room probably thinks of something different. We may think of some things that are the same, but certainly we don't have a uniform, you know, commonly held definition of what Mediterranean means. Having said that, there may be, for instance, colors that are more represent, more typical in Mediterranean construction. So if those colors existed and the city specified that you must use one of these four colors, that is an objective design standard, insofar as all of us can look at those four colors and say, "Okay, I get to pick one or more of these colors." So it's really a shift from the, the way design standards were handled in the past, which was more of a visioning exercise for cities, right? Cities would look at their community and say, "The downtown area needs to have more of an old-time feel. The northern residential area needs to have a ranch-type feel." It gets away from that, and it gets more to the nuts and bolts of, "What do you mean by ranch? What do you mean by Mediterranean?" Trying to draw it out and spell it out as definitively as possible. So we have a proposed ordinance in front of you that I will be the first to say does not go all the way towards establishing objective design standards for the city. This is intentionally a first step in the process, recognizing that the process itself is likely to take some time. So we've done a couple of things with the ordinance before you today. We have proposed creating a new chapter in the municipal code that would house these objective design standards. We have started to enumerate definitions and measurement methodologies for use in the design standards. You'll see there's a very lengthy measurement section that talks about, "When we say the height of a window, we mean from this point to this point. When we say the height of a wall, we mean from this point to this point." Part of that is, again, making it as knowable and uniform as possible. So those I would consider to be like, you know, the groundwork for the broader objective design standards. We've included a preliminary list of prohibited design elements, things that wouldn't be allowed in any type of construction. Those prohibited design elements come from either things that are already prohibited in your municipal code, we're trying to consolidate as much as we can into this chapter, or things that at the staff level, we felt comfortable recommending today without the benefit of engaging an architect. We felt comfortable saying that these are probably things that we can generally agree we shouldn't be allowing in new construction. So they include things like unfinished metal or wood surfaces. They include things like permanent installations of chain-link fence. They include light box signs, which are the kind of single piece of plastic, light-through-the-back type of signs, as opposed to individually illuminated letters or logos. So we've come up with certain prohibitions. There's a whole section called prohibited design elements. And then we've created spots in the chapter for design standards that would apply to all projects, design standards that would apply specifically to more nuanced pieces of projects, like balconies, generators, trash enclosures, vehicle parking areas, and then separate sections for additional regulations or additional standards that would apply to non-residential and residential projects. The non-residential piece is a placeholder for now. We haven't proposed specific non-residential standards, except to say that the standards that exist for all projects, vehicle parking areas, trash enclosures, generators, those would apply to non-residential projects as well. The, the thinking behind some of this, so if you've got a chance to look through the ordinance, the design standards for all projects, talk about scale, talk about privacy, you know, windows not looking directly into other windows, talks about providing driveway access and sidewalk access that complies with the same standard that we use for the rest of our citywide sidewalks, talks about when you have a flat roof with rooftop-mounted equipment, you need to have parapet walls to hide that from public view. Design standards for balconies talks about making sure that those balconies are set back a certain distance from adjacent open space passive and residentially zoned parcels, with the idea being that it's a way to keep balconies from looming over additional potentially smaller-scale residential structures. Design standards for generators, generators and trash enclosures, you already have a lot of standards in the municipal code that relate to both of these. You added some when you codified the cannabis store for retailer ordinance, there were some additional standards in there, so we pulled from all of those places, consolidated them in this ordinance. In the residential project section, we recognize that there's going to be a need for some broader discussion with an architect engaged to help the City Council synthesize a vision for the community and design standards specific to new construction. But as a holding point in the residential project section, we've included standards that we pulled from other jurisdictions that had generally Spanish-influenced design standards for new housing projects, and we've pulled out some things like, at least 60% of roof decks need to be made of either Spanish or mission-shaped tiles. They need to have overhanging eaves of at least 24 inches. 80% of walls should have stucco or plaster in a neutral color. Talks about breaking up massing long walls, so you can't go more than 40 feet in length without having some, at least like a two-foot variation in the depth of the wall plane, or with some sort of element like trellises or bays, or something to break up what would otherwise be like a really long, flat mass of a wall. We require exterior windows to be recessed from the wall plane, and at least 30% of those exterior windows to be within arched openings. When there's wood elements included, so for instance, like faux balconies or real balconies, that those wood elements be in a darker color than the neutral color against which they're put up against. So it's not, again, this is, this does not go 100% where we need to go, but I was trying to get us to a point where we had some standards in place so that we have some level of certainty and protection while we go through the broader process of teasing out these requirements. Before I move on, I guess, I'll also just say that with respect to vehicle parking areas, we include some requirements that if those parking areas are covered, that the roof materials are consistent with the other roofing materials found on the project site, and we also include a vehicle light intrusion section that talks about when a vehicle parking space is within 20 feet of either an open space passive or a residentially zoned parcel, that those parking spaces be obstructed by either, you know, a wall or some other type of design feature that interrupts that light from traveling into the residential parcel or the open space passive parcel. In these standards, the way that they're written, and this is not unusual in terms of design standards, it says, "This is what you have to comply with, but if you want to do something different," we're not saying you can't, "but that requires a conditional use permit. You need to go to the council. You need to go through a more officious process to get some sort of deviation from these standards." The other thing that also is not unusual, it says in these proposed standards, that in the event that an objective design standard that we have created conflicts either now or in the future with the state building code or other state law, that that state building code or state law is what prevails. So in other words, we're not trying to create inconsistencies with state law, we're trying to do our best to stay within our lane, but if we veer outside of it, then state law rules the day. We do have a number of revisions we'd like to make to the proposed code amendments, so these are all to Exhibit A, to Attachment A, the actual code text. I'll run through them, but I'll say that most of these are cleaning up like spelling errors and things. In the definition of an awning, we have a reference to weather projection, we mean weather protection. In the definition of a light box sign, we say which may includes images, we obviously mean to say which may include images. We have some extraneous text that belonged to an earlier iteration in the definition of wall, so just floating in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "Then three use two enclosed space." That should be deleted in its entirety. In the prohibited design element section, we have a reference to sparking paint, we really mean sparkling. Design standards for residential projects, we have a phrase that says, "Wall pane shall be." We mean wall plane shall be. And then the more substantive of them is just a different take on the driveway and public street section. So I'll, I'll read you, I have the red line up there, but I'll read you the current language and then the proposed language, just so we're all on the same page. So the current language says, "To the extent that such reconstruction results in all or a portion of any driveway or adjacent sidewalk extending beyond the city's existing public street easements or right-of-way, the property owner of record of the applicable parcels shall grant to the city an irrevocable public street easement for that part of the driveway and adjacent sidewalk, prior to occupying any newly constructed or expanded buildings or structures, the result of which requires compliance with this chapter." We're looking to accomplish similar things through different language. We would like to revise it to say, "To the extent that such reconstruction results in any discrepancy between the new driveway and/or new adjacent sidewalk and the city's existing public street easements or right-of-way, such discrepancies shall be resolved prior to occupying any newly constructed or expanded buildings or structures, the result of which requires compliance with this chapter." Those are the only changes that we're proposing, so we would plan to incorporate that into our recommendation, so there's another opportunity for a public hearing today. After that public hearing, our recommendation would be that you approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance, read by title with further reading waived, titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Adding Chapter 11.10 to Title 11, Planning and Development of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code, Establishing Objective Design Standards for Certain New Development and Redevelopment Projects, and Determining and Certifying That the Ordinance Is Exempt From the California Environmental Quality Act." That would be with the revisions to Exhibit A, the code amendments exhibit, proposed by staff. Just a couple of comments before I wrap up here, that we do view these as interim design standards, so even though we're recommending design standards, so even though we're recommending that you adopt these so that we have something as opposed to nothing, we are continuing to work internally on broader design standards for your consideration. One of the next things that we need to do is retain an architect to work directly with this body, to get a sense of what you are hoping to accomplish and what kind of hard limits for you are on either side, things that you aren't comfortable with, things that you might be comfortable with, that sort of thing, and to get a better sense of what both your vision for the community's aesthetic character is and what the public's vision is. There are a number of architects that work in this space. Not every architect does this kind of work, but there are a number of cities and surrounding areas that have, in the recent past, retained architects to do exactly this. So we will be doing a broad call for proposals to architects, but specifically making sure we reach out to people that we know are active in this space. Once we get that architect on board, I imagine there will be some sort of workshops or public meetings, both with the council and with the public at large, to gather some of that input and then embark on that broader process of creating longer term design standards. During that time, it's also entirely possible that we will come to you with another round of interim standards that seek to beef up what we're proposing today. This is, you know, I don't know how long the architect led process is going to take, but I think we all have a shared interest in making sure that we protect the character and the aesthetics of this community to the extent possible. So we're going to continue to try to chip away at it and then do a broader comprehensive update, once the architect finishes their work with the city council and with residents. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor. That's all I have.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any public comments related to these proposed design standards?
And just to be clear, we're opening the public hearing.
I am opening the public hearing and asking for public comments. There being none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any council comments related to these architectural standards. Go ahead. Noel, do you have anything you want to add? Any inquiries?
It was on before. It was on.
I want to thank the city manager for explaining in anticipation of a question I was planning on asking, and was simply, what is the purpose of attachment A? And you have explained that extremely well. And it would appear to me, based upon the report, my examination of the interim standards, that this flashing yellow light which you have created here with the, if we adopt these interim standards, is a very valuable tool that we should approve today in anticipation of that this becomes a living document that is subject to review and presentations and discussion among all of us. Thank you for a very complete report.
Yeah, it was a really good report, and it's a good idea to put these, because I hadn't thought about it until you enumerated.
No, no, just move your mic down a little bit, sorry.
Until you enumerated some of the really truly bad things that could be. So the only thing, you know, I'm looking forward to the architect, but to me, the golf cart path, in that any new building has that wide a sidewalk, because that's a really valuable thing for lots of our residents, that they can get anywhere in the city in their golf cart. And so I would really object to that being obstructed. But other than that, it's wonderful.
I will accept a motion to approve the, move it?
And that's with the revisions as proposed?
With the revisions. I'd like to move it, move it. Sorry.
I'll move it in a second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, that is unanimous. Okay. The next item on our schedule is 8.2, the city council meeting schedule. We need to set up a new meeting, an additional meeting, a special meeting.
Yes, we do. We had an item that is time sensitive, that was to be on this agenda. It relates to a potential collaborative opportunity on a grant application with the city of Laguna Hills. We did not receive all of the information we needed to make it on this agenda, but since there is some time sensitivity to it, and also to provide an opportunity for any other business that we might have ready for you, we would recommend that the council schedule an adjourned regular meeting of the city council for October 25th, 2023, at 3:30 PM at Laguna Woods City Hall, 24264 El Toro Road, Laguna Woods, California, 92637. This is next Wednesday at 3:30. We have checked with council member Moore, and this date and time does work for her, just so you're aware.
Does this date work for everybody else? Do you need a motion on that or just a consensus?
Yes, please.
Okay. All those in favor of scheduling?
We'll need a motion first.
So move.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Nobody is opposed, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our agendized items, and now we have city council reports and comments. And we'll start with Coastal Green Belt Authority. Did we have a meeting lately?
No, we did, we had a meeting months back, and I gave that report last month, so no meeting.
Thanks. Next one's the fire authority.
My favorite firefighter is here with us today, and I thought he was going to leave before the meeting was over, but Merrick Hunter is the division chief in Division Five. And that includes San Clemente, does it not? No, it does not, so it's not. Anyway, I will ignore the primary activity that we're engaged in, and that's the creation, the acquisition of a piece of land to serve as the housing and the headquarters for the hen crews that go out and dig and prepare the soil for silver. One is down in Rancho, Mission Viejo possibly, or San Clemente, and they're both jockeying for a position. Each of those communities would like the facility, and we need the facility, and so it's coming up for discussion. But what I'd like to do is something Sheri has done from time to time, and I appreciate it's a little bit late, but I think this will only take about 10 minutes. We had three appearances on the, three films on the internet, and it came through, and I think Chris has those, about some of the activities, some of the equipment, particularly airborne equipment that we can do to fight, and I think you'll find these interesting. So this is our governor, as I recall, is, no, just enjoy these things, but this, this is why men like Hunter and why our captain go into their field.
The FIRIS platform that was established didn't exist before 2019.
Welcome aboard one of the most high-tech, and my waypoint just puts me like right there on the Ontario freeway.
Firefighting tools, again with two major fires raging right now.
In the world, based here in California.
I'm going to cross the head now, the downwind portion of the fire.
This is Intel 12, part of the FIRIS program. FIRIS, which stands for Fire Integrated Real Time Intelligence System. That's the official acronym for this state of the art infrared and high definition aerial camera system.
I'm going to switch to IR. There's still quite a lot of heat.
Orange County Fire Authority Fire Chief Brian Finacy was the visionary behind the FIRIS program. He was able to secure funding and recruit vendors to begin this pilot program in Southern California. The success of Chief Finacy's program has now transitioned to the state, and the state of California, and the firefighters throughout the state, federal, state, local firefighters want to thank Chief Finacy and the Orange County Fire Authority for their vision in creating this mutual aid asset.
I believe by, you know, Orange County Fire Authority taking a proof of concept, developing that to a point for it to be a legitimate and valuable state program and handing it off to Cal OES, who is, let's face it, the state's all hazard agency, just makes great sense.
Its ability to keep firefighters safe, to rapidly identify fire spread, to be able to protect lives and property, and deploy resources will be essential in our ability to effectively respond to events that are impacting the state.
We just got off the old King Air here, the FIRIS platform that was established didn't exist before 2019. I want to just compliment the extraordinary work done down in Orange County and the local leadership down there that piloted a framework and a process to utilize infrared technology in real time to map early detection and to map the broader movement of wildfires in that jurisdiction. We were so impressed with the technology, OES, our Office of Emergency Service decided to contract directly with it and expand it. Now we have two of these platforms, Northern California and Southern California.
Two years ago, we found that firefighting resources in the West were really stressed, to the point where the firefighting community had to make judgment calls on where they would send resources. As a result of that, I was approached by the Orange County Fire Authority to consider entering into a relationship with them, Ventura County and LA County, on a program that they were creating called Quick Reaction Force.
During fire season, these helicopters play a very important role in stopping threats before they become disasters. Their ability to fly at night and fill 3,000 gallons of water in just 90 seconds without even touching the ground makes them a crucial weapon against wildland fires.
We are changing the way aerial firefighting is being done, so much so that now the U.S. Forest Service is considering contracting for large helitankers like the ones you see behind me to be operational not just during the day as they are now, but at night.
We've had a relationship with Southern California Edison for five years now, and we thought, wow, you know, if we had three of these, you know, and a command and control platform to organize these, imagine the kind of surge force we'd represent on your, you know, day to day fires. And beyond that, how cool would it be to be able to drop fire retardant at night after the airplanes all go home? So that's kind of how it was born. Wrote up a white paper, I presented it to Edison, and they loved it, and QRF was born, you know, three years ago, and here we are today. It's been a fantastic journey.
Take a breath, hope is on the way.
where high school students come in.
The Girls Empowerment Camp?
The Girls Academy, the high school just opened, didn't it, for the girls come in for some training at headquarters?
Yeah, they happened a couple weeks ago.
About a month ago, yeah. There were what, about 50 girls that came in? Do you remember? Yeah, come on up, please.
Yeah. Chief, would you make a point of letting us know the next time, the next year, when you do the Girls Empowerment Camp? Because I went there once, and it was very impressive.
Sure.
And I'd love to go back and see it again next year.
Definitely put out a bigger invite to all the council members, and you can come out and see the Girls Empowerment Camp. I don't know how many participated. I know that they had a waiting list of interested participants, so I can't give you the exact number.
But it's an opportunity, and there's great enthusiasm in that, is there not?
It's a great opportunity. I mean, that's what, for me, makes our organization great, is there's opportunities for everybody. So it's an opportunity to onboard individuals under our fire department, making sure that they have a understanding of what they can do, where a lot of people don't know what the fire department does, they don't have access. They just see us in videos, they see fire engine driving by, but until you have that opportunity to go to Girls Empowerment Camp, become a cadet, a reserve, you just don't know. I mean, you can go to any of our fire stations, walk in, get a tour, talk to the firefighters, see what the career and the profession's all about.
And there is a real interest in having more female firefighters join, is there not, right now? A real understanding?
I think just in the fire service, there's just an interest in having anybody and everybody, regardless of age, sex, race, just everybody, you know? Diverse fire departments, diversity brings us all together. We know that in our communities, we know that in the fire department. And it just gives us, to me, my opinion is, it gives us an advantage, and we definitely need to use our advantages and opportunities to be better as an agency.
And how are you? Things are quiet in our district, are they not, right now?
Well, you saw the two fire engines go by. Things are always busy here. I mean, this is our busiest fire station in the whole county. They had a couple shifts recently where each fire engine out of this station ran over 20 calls. The truck, I think, ran over 12 calls. The satellite stations around were coming in here to help out. In Eliso Viejo, the station that I'm at where my office is, they had 17 calls, which is quite a bit. So things are picking up. Obviously, with the weather, things change and make it a little bit busier for us with heat related injuries. A lot more people are out and about, especially in the summertime.
But you're okay?
I'm okay, I'm staying busy, and I know you're trying to give me another city, San Clemente, but I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
All right.
Question about that Ferris technology? It looks fascinating. What does it do? Does it look down and see where the hottest ignition source is of that fire, so they'll know where to drop it? Or what exactly does it do?
So with FIRIS, it's a, it came from, it's okay, it came from the military. And what it is, is it's a camera system, and it's a plane that flies high above, and it takes pictures of the fire, and it sends it back to a intelligence center. And they're able to look at where it is real time and predict where the fire's going to go based on the weather and the winds. So the way we were doing that before is we would be out there in our command vehicle, looking at what's going on and going, I think that, well, I know the fire's going this way, but how long is it going to be till it threatens homes? How fast is it? How fast is it going to grow? That technology tells us real-time, here's where your fire's going to be, here's where your fire's at now, here's where it's going to be 5, 10, 15, 20 minutes from now. So now you can put your resources in place with confidence, knowing that they're going to be in front of the fire, in front of houses. It also helps us know when to evacuate. So I was the incident commander for the Blue Ridge Fire, and we used FIRIS to our advantage, knowing the neighborhoods we had to evacuate and where we needed to deploy resources in Orange County as well as Chino.
That's great. Thank you for the bigger explanation.
I want to get back to the Girls Empowerment Camp. I was fortunate to be invited to one several years ago, and I still have images of girls carrying chainsaws, up ladders, and rappelling out of third-story windows, and one of the images I liked was a young woman holding a fire hose with an orange pylon in front of her, and a firefighter was standing behind her with a hand against her back, and once they were set, then they turned on the water pressure.
The pressure.
Yeah. And I recognize it as a, as a way to introduce young women is into the potential of a fire career, and, but also, as its name implies, just a way for, for girls to see what they're capable of, and I thought it was very impressive.
No, it's, it's great, great opportunity. Like I said, I know I wouldn't be standing here in front of you today if it wasn't for what I saw and was exposed to as a kid, to be able to see individuals on a fire engine where I grew up that looked just like me. It let me know, hey, that's something I can do. And then going and seeking out and becoming a fire explorer, getting those opportunities, just like a Girls Empowerment Camp, it opens your eyes to what you can do in life as well, because I learned a lot of life lessons.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Captain.
Okay, next report, advisory board. Do we have anybody here from the advisory board? Okay, I think that's Carol. Mosquito and Vector Control District, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I have a report. We didn't have a meeting because of the League of Cities meeting, but, and we don't have a meeting till tomorrow, so I have to direct her email to the board. Okay, this mosquito season.
This mosquito season has continued to have a high abundance of both the local Kool-Ax mosquitoes and invasive Aedes. Hurricane Hillary's last summer rains and continued warm temperatures have created ideal mosquito breeding conditions. West Nile virus activity continues to be moderate in North Orange County, with 18 cities having detections in the county. Currently, the county averages, average rating is at 3.4, which means that the county is seeing an elevated West Nile virus activity. So that's, that's what I got, and our meeting is tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the toll roads, and I just wanted to point out a couple of things. And about a month ago, we installed 80 new channelizers at the intersection of the 241 and the 91. Anyone who's driven out towards Riverside, or Palm Springs, or Las Vegas on a Friday afternoon knows how traffic backs up when you start to turn east on the 91, and we've put up channelizers to prevent queue jumping. It doesn't shorten the line, but it makes it safer for motorists, as there's not people diving into that lane at the last minute. But people were diving into that lane and driving across the dirt medium, even at the lastest minute. So now those little channelizers, which are those red, those white bop-down things that you can drive over if you are foolish, they extend all the way past the interchange, and that's, people have said that that has much reduced the incidence of people trying to jump in at the front of the line. Also, there, we are planning to use our reserve funds to add extra lanes at the peak of Highway 73 between here and Costa Mesa. People traveling north on Highway 73, particularly before COVID, probably noticed the traffic came to often of reaching halt or 20 miles an hour near the crest of that hill before Bison and Newport Coast Highway. And people don't like to pay tolls to be stuck in traffic, so we're planning to add lanes there. We took a short, a short break to do a traffic and growth study, and concluded that our traffic is almost rebounded from pre-COVID levels, and after it reaches that, it will continue to grow at a, a little more than 2% a year. And that's because our population is going up, our jobs are going up, and our housing is going up, so there will be more trips. So that, it won't be completed for a few years, but hopefully by the time the increased usage is really evident, it will be completed. And that's being paid for out of our own reserves, so we're always glad not to have to borrow money. I also attended, I'm going to go out of order here, I also attended a meeting with our supervisor, Katrina Foley, and I wanted to remind everybody about the Senior Summit on October 27 at SoCal University. There will be booths from 75 or more different providers, and it should be very interesting and a good way to learn about resources in the area. Also, on Supervisor Foley's website, there is a series of Wellness Wednesday Walks, which are docent-guided tours on walkways throughout county regional parks. So if anybody's interested in finding new places to walk, that's a good way to do it. The improvements on Highway 405 north, north between Costa Mesa and LA County, they're supposed to be completed and opened by year's end. And there's been some work on Amtrak rail stabilization for anyone who takes a train going south. You know that for a while, the rails were slipping closer to the sea, and they put in rocks, and that didn't work, and then they put in anchors into the hillside, and that was helpful until Casa Romantica began sliding down the hill, and then they had to do something else. So they are, in connection with sea level rise and other things, they are looking at long-term solutions for moving the tracks, which will be expensive. Okay, watershed management, is that also Carol's? Also Carol's. How about the bridge builders? Do you guys have anything to report?
I have really nothing to report, but the Orange County Human Relations Commission puts out a hate crimes report, and if you dial, if you have, are the subject of a hate incident or a hate crime, you can just call 211 and report it. It's really important to report, but their hate crimes report also has other resources for all the different kinds of things. So these are tough times, have, 211 is an easy number to remember. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, any other comments or reports? Okay, we are adjourned to our next adjourned regular meeting on October 25 at 3:30 in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.